I want to thank you all for being here today. We are very excited by this turnout, both from you and from our candidates. My name is Walker Foley. I'm the senior organizer at Food and Water Watch. If you don't know us, we are a national organization that works locally to stand up the corporations who put their profits before people and advocate for a democracy that improves people's lives and protects our environment. For the last five years, we've been at work right here in the northwest San Fernando Valley to do just that. I don't believe I have to recap the events that followed October 23rd, 2015, when the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility blew out. Many of you lived through that nightmare, but in many ways, that event changed civic life in the valley. It took many residents of this community meeting protests, attending hearings, knocking on their neighbors' doors, busing up to Sacramento to keep that facility closed for regular day-to-day operations. And I believe, and I think maybe you all might believe, that our elected officials must not represent solely the interests of major corporations, but must instead govern for and with the communities they represent. So, the goal here is to let today be that foot forward in building a new relationship with whoever represents us at City Hall, right? So today, we're going to hear from the candidates on a number of issues, but before we get onto the program, I'd just like to give recognition to some of our partners. Of course, our host, the Temple Ahaba Shalom, for opening their doors. The League of Women Voters for guiding us through the work. Let me finish before you applaud and then applaud. Brad Main, Los Angeles, made all the phone calls and knocked on doors every single weekend for over a month to let folks in the valley know about today. They went above and beyond to make sure you had access to the candidates. Now you applaud. Next, State Quarter Ranch, they continue to be a very close partner. They are the biggest reason the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility is closed for regular operations, and they continue to fight today to keep it shut down permanently. I'd like to thank Power or the People Organized for West Side Renewal and the SoCal Environmental Coalition for their constant support in our organizing work. Special thanks to the Americans for Democratic Action, they provided the food and refreshments in the social hall after the forum. We have seen we have a number of volunteers today. We don't get done what we need to do without them, so I'd like to thank everyone who's staffing this event right now. So I'd like to introduce your actual moderator, who we are thrilled to have today. She asked me to keep our introduction very short, so I will just say it has been an absolute pleasure to work with a professional like Adrian Albert, ABC Seven. She's the accomplished host of ABC Seven's Eyewitness Newsmakers, and without further delay, I'd like to turn the program over to her. Thank you.
Let me see if this has been okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, I may just have... All right, I speak very loud. So I just want to say a couple of things, and I'm honored to be asked by these organizations to be your moderator this afternoon, and these are the ground rules that you agree to. No opening statements. You'll have one minute for our closing statement. Questions have been written by your participating organizations. Questions will include a lightning round for one more answer, and questions already lightning from the audience. The last question will be a 30-second question, an open question that you can choose that you didn't get asked during the course of this program. The candidates will answer in random order, and the order will change with every round, so if one candidate doesn't consistently come out for another, there will be equal time, but all candidates may not be asked the same question. In each of the rounds, questions will be grouped in similar process. As moderator, I have the discretion for our follow-up and pointy clarification. We ask for civility. Personal attacks not tolerated. Your timekeepers are here, in front, so you see them. You'll get a yellow raffle and a red stop, and if you're curious as to how much one minute was, ask the winner. One word to our audience. We're counting on your form from candidates heckling and booing not permitted. Ushers will only give you one warning. They will escort you out. Ushers will also provide a collect question cards if you wish to send any in right now. Ushers, once you weigh a little bit, ushers. If you have any cards on you and want to get one, those are there to collect them. Please hold your applause throughout this program. You're taking time away from your candidates. So the time of applause is at the end and at the beginning, which is now. This is randomly generated, and it's not going to go down the line to begin with, so this is question round one. Epics, your answers will be 30 seconds. Group one will be starting with Jeff Dar. The pay-to-play image of city-county politics, whether real or perceived, damages public trust in government. How can elected officials address this issue? Jeff Dar.
Hi, Jeff Dar. First, I support the proposed ban on developer money, and I am, as a candidate, not taking developer money. I don't want to have the perception. In my regular world, I'm a lawyer for 30, almost seven years, and if it doesn't look right, doesn't smell right, you don't do it. You don't try to figure out a loophole. That's what our city council members need to do. They need to avoid the appearance of anything that would be something that any of us should wonder about, and that's what we should do, and they should breathe, and they should be ahead of the game, so we're not waiting to find out what the FBI would do to us.
Next time. Jay Gager, saying how much you think, why you think of your city council policies.
Yes, thank you, and thank everyone for organizing today. Look, we all know that the system is rigged down in City Hall, and it has been for a real long time. It's time that the people take back the power from the elected officials and the insiders who are only really in it for themselves. We have to do it by changing our ethics laws. David Root put in a request, put in a motion to change the ethics rules, and it has taken years for this to go through. But when the city council wants to get something done, they can do it immediately.
Right, Barry, same question. Why do you think of your city council?
You know, our citizens aren't going to trust government or public officials until the public officials transparent and communicate honesty and follow the rule law. In this election, I had to spend $15,000 to enforce an ethics law that was very clear to the public, but not to an individual, and the judge agreed that this individual couldn't run this election, and it wasn't about that person, it was about the city of Los Angeles following their very own laws that they set, as we should for all laws that are set for the city of Los Angeles, including pay-to-play developer money.
Next question. One of the League's goals is to remove the influence of big money in politics. What is your opinion of the Ethics Commission's recommendation to ban non-person and foreign money campaign donations? Sean Denzey.
Sean Denzey, thank you guys for being here today. Thank you for having me. Right now, I don't trust, I don't trust our government. I don't trust our local government. In no way should anybody be accepting any type of money that would grease the pockets of elected officials. We need to change that, and the only way we're going to change that is put someone in a position that will make those decisions that are in the best interest of not only this community, but the rest of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Next, candidate Stella Malloy. The next question is, one of the League's goals is to remove the influence of big money in politics. What is your opinion of the Ethics Commission's recommendation to ban non-person and foreign money campaign donations?
I totally agree with that decision, and I think it goes hand-in-hand with the revolving door within the City Hall, and I think that's the only way to ensure transparency, validity, and integrity. Thank you.
Moving to now Raj Singh for the same question.
I think ethics has taken a lead. City is taking a lead by offering candidates matching funds. I think this is very generous. If the candidates take, make use of that, there should be no need of outside money in this election. And when I hear from people that tens of billions of dollars are going to be spent on this election, I wonder who those people are, who those bags are, and why would they spend money on this city election? This election is for the community.
Scott Abrams, same question on big money in politics.
Yes, so I absolutely support the ban that's been suggested, and I'll go further and say that we have to hold elected officials accountable, not just holding donors accountable. That's why I have called for additional ethics requirements of candidates, for instance, to reveal what boards they sit on, do they have conflicts of interest. We need to know this information because the money will find a way, we know they depend expenditures, these groups are going to try to influence them. We need to know our elected officials are behind the promotion. Thank you.
All right, Ray Long, question about big money in politics.
Thank you everyone for being here. Absolutely, I support the ban that you mentioned, and I also support the ban that earlier candidates mentioned of developer money and corporate money and behested payments. And the way for us to trust our government is to elect grassroots candidates, ones who are not accepting large checks from lots of corporate money, but who have lots of small-dollar donations. And I'm really proud of our city for their amazing public financing system that we have passed, one of the best in the nation, that is propelling grassroots candidates like my own to City Hall. Thank you.
All right, time. And next is another question. Another way to curry favor with elected officials is to give money to their pet nonprofits. Are there situations where behested payments should be considered applicable? Joshua Gager.
Thank you again, everybody. Absolutely not. I'm going to clean it up. That's why we have the issue with the FBI in the 14th County District, those same kind of behested payments. I truly believe that, you know, everyone, regardless of their status in the community, whether you're a community leader or you're president of a chamber, should have the same access to your elected officials, and that's why I've committed myself, knocking on tens of thousands of doors within this community, and it's been 30 months, and I'm hearing and getting community input, so that we can make sure we bring our community voice back to City Hall.
That's time. And our next question goes to Brandon, and I did get introductions at the same time.
Sorry.
Sorry, y'all, I'm sorry. Brandon, sorry. And this is about currying favor with pet nonprofits.
One of the reasons why I'm running for office is that I'm sick and tired of pay-to-play. I'm sick and tired of the FBI investigating our city council. I came out very strong against lobbyists and people who are connected to the city council, and I had coffee with someone that everybody in this room would know, I'm not going to say his name, but after having coffee with that person, I was personally threatened to no longer talk about lobbyists, no longer to talk about developers, so much so that they said, "We're watching everything you say, we're watching everything you do, and we're watching you every single time you get in and out of your car." I'm not going to back down, and I'm tired of it, I'm tired of the corruption, and I'm not going to stand for it.
Carlos Amador.
Hello, Carlos Amador, resident in Red Island Hills. I am strongly opposed to the behested payments methods that are being used by city council members and city officials to really give back to the donors of the times, lobbyists or other, or other big donors that are supporting their campaigns, so I want to make sure that we're putting in place the strongest protections against developer money, non-individual contributions, as well as behested payments that are done on behalf of candidates and city council officials.
All right, now we're moving on to our round two. This question will be 60 seconds to answer. This is about the environment. First question, what can the city of Los Angeles do to advance the permanent closure of the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility, and what will you do as a council member to lead? Lorraine Moni.
Well, the Canyon Gas Storage Facility absolutely needs to be shut down, and I am the only candidate up here who has been with the community fighting as a boots-on-the-ground advocate for that from the beginning. So how are we going to do it? Well, the interesting thing is, we don't actually need this facility. We actually have pipeline capacity to meet our full gas demand without this storage facility. This storage facility largely serves as a place for investors, SoCal Gas allows investors to buy gas when the price is low and sell it when the price is high, and store it right here in our backyard in our community, and that's not okay. In addition to that, we need to move off of fossil fuels into the new green economy of the future, and this is an opportunity to help propel that change that we know we need to make anyway. Lastly, the 15 seconds, all right. So lastly, it's actually cheaper to do things like paying people to conserve energy at key times than it is to keep this facility that costs $40 million a year to you all, the ratepayers, to keep it open.
All right, and this is to Joshua Gager again, Aliso Canyon, 1 minute.
Thank you very much. There's a short-term and a long-term incident. Long-term, we have to absolutely shut it down, but short-term, we have to look at how we are currently situated for the grid. There has been a lack of investment in our grid, in our electrical grid, and not to mention that, just to report last week, $13,000 per household that it'll cost to switch over all of our gas burning, water heaters, and stoves to make sure that we can support electric appliances. So we need to be realistic in the way we talk on Aliso Canyon. It absolutely does need to be shut down, but we need to find out, A, who's going to pay for every household to be retrofitted for electricity, and B, find out, you know, how long realistically they're going to pay. I'd love to have it done within five years, but you know, all of it's kind of set on how city government and the county and state want it.
Hi, you have a little more time. Thank you. Stella Malloy, and you have the next round in this round.
Aliso Canyon is personal to me. My family and I were displaced six months. We had health complications. Aliso Canyon has to be shut down, period. The way I would approach it is I would create an independent panel committee to address solutions of how this can be closed down in phases. I would also, it's all hands-on, that reduce natural gas, so we won't be needing the valley-generating station, hence we won't be needing Aliso Canyon Station. So it's disgusting that that's in our neighborhoods and in my own backyard, and I'm not a unit of story. Thank you.
Jay Gager.
Yeah, well, first of all, I think we all have to recognize that what occurred with the Aliso Canyon gas blowout was unconscionable with the way that the response was in terms of what happened there, and the delay in getting this handled, and the delay in getting it reported. That's the first thing. We can't accept that, and we have to hold SoCal Gas fully responsible for every single thing that happened. The facility needs to be shut down, and we have to protect the ratepayers along the way, because it should not be on our backs with regards to how much this costs because of their mistakes. But I do want to say this about how elected officials would do this. Somebody said to me that elected officials who were involved in this said, "Well, they didn't have the legal authority to do anything about it, to actually take action." And you know what? There's a difference between legal authority and moral authorities. Nobody gave me legal authority to shut down a red light camera program. Nobody gave me legal authority to change every single traffic light in the state of California, so the, so people didn't run red lights. Nobody gave me legal authority to do parking work. You do it because it's the right thing to do, and then you get community value. Thank you.
Next question, and the next group, part of the environment, 60 seconds still. What is your vision to transition Los Angeles to 100% clean renewable energy? How does District 12 play a role in this transition? Brandon Soria.
I take my golden retriever to Old Melvin Park almost every weekend. We go to the Chatsworth Trails almost every week. The thing that makes District 12 to northwest San Fernando Valley a special place is the wider space of the green areas and the beauty of it. What I get tired of is the increases in energy costs to taxpayers, to homeowners, to people living in apartment buildings. It's already unaffordable for us to be living in the San Fernando Valley. I know so many people that are looking to move. When I ran for State 7 in 2018, so many people that I met with were just fed up. They can't afford the energy prices, they can't afford the gas prices, they can't afford anything anymore because of the unwarranted and the taxes, mandates, and fees that don't go to anything that they promised to. I love this place. I love the green parks. I love everything about the northwest San Fernando. I was born and raised here, and I will fight for it to make sure it stays green.
Frank Barry, next question again, 60 seconds on the environment.
For 15 years, I served up in Santa Clarita as a councilman and mayor, and we started doing things we could do right away, and that was having green building projects, our transit center, our new hall library. We made sure that we had developments where there were incentives to use recycled products and also to have water that's captured and to reseep into our aquifer to make sure our voluvial system is replenished, which is 50% of our water. We made sure that we had three metro links stations, we made sure that we had commuter transit buses that brought our citizens to their jobs in the city of Los Angeles. You have to look at every opportunity within your development and make sure that your developers are paying for solar energy projects within homes. You have to make sure that the developing projects that capture water and do things to take people out of their cars and into trains and into buses. I'm not trying to ignore you, I just can't see you.
100% clean renewable energy, and this one is for Carlos Amador.
Thank you, Carlos Amador. I think about my daughter, five-year-old girl who's about to go to kindergarten, the future that we're gonna, we're building for her. I think about the children that she interacts with and she is friends with here in the Red Island Hills area, and I think about that when I make decisions on my platform and the efforts that I want to be able to achieve when I get to city council. So we can and should be able to build towards 100% renewable energy by 2030, and I think some efforts have been done already by the mayor's office and by city council. I think the role that we can play as a community in the northwest San Fernando Valley is to make sure that we're implementing and investing in the development of solar energy, whether it's decentralized or large-scale, I think that's a conversation for us to have, you know, with stakeholders, but that is something that is doable, that is cheaper than the current status quo, and that is going to preserve the environment and the future for our children. So I want to make sure that we're able to do that, as well as invest. Thank you.
And finally, Scott Abrams, same question.
Yeah, so increasingly, the percentage of fossil fuels that our city is consuming that are still out there would be those used in transit. So that's why for many years, I think, working with Congressman Brad Sherman as his chief aide to bring transit solutions to the San Fernando Valley. So we campaigned for measure, and the voters in this room voted to tax themselves a little bit more to fund these projects. But the valley wasn't getting its fair share, and that's why we've been pushing day in and day out to get improvements on the origin line, for instance, so that time from one end to the other, now from 40-plus minutes to 20-something minutes. That's why we've been working so hard to get rail from the Sepulveda Pass so that valley residents can get on the subway in the valley and get all the way, not just to West LA, but to the airport. So we need to increasingly move our way towards public transit that's convenient and that's safe. We need police on those, on those rail lines too, to make sure that people feel okay doing it. Finally, CD 12, CSN has this sustainability institute, but you know what? They have trouble with DWP being able to fully maximize their savings, so we'll all put them on.
All right, that is your time. All right, this is Stella, the environment, 60 seconds, new question. In 2010, NASA made an agreement with the state of California to clean up to the highest standards heavily contaminated soils at a toxic waste disposal site at the Santa Susana Field Laboratory. That work was to be completed by 2017. Now, two years later, nothing has been done. What will you do to protect the health and safety of valley residents and ensure the cleanup of the site? First one's up to Jeff Dar.
Thank you. Jeff Dar, first of all, what I would do is follows, we just had, from CD 12, by the way, I'm proud to say, a motion to make sure we had $600,000 for legal fees to enforce the existing agreement. I would support that and go further. I'm also aware that there are a lot of concerns that part of the cleanup, which we need to do, includes going through our district with the contaminated materials, and I'm very concerned that we go through that issue very well, because that, I think, is a very bona fide issue. And then, touching back on the issue that we did have, that we had a moment ago, since we have a moment of extra time, 100% renewable energy, because it wasn't really addressed by everyone fully. We need to invest $5 billion to get there. We need to sit here and immediately start working in zero emission vehicles. We need to update our general plan, so we build into the city infrastructure sustainability, resiliency, and equity, so that it is a cemented part of our infrastructure, and also, we need to sit here on renewable energy, deal with recycling our wastewater, which is huge, and that requires more time. Thank you.
All right, this is still talking about the cleanup at Santa Susana. This is for Sean Denzey.
Sean Denzey. You know, I've had the opportunity to meet with different groups of people and people that have been infected, impacted by Santa Susana, and there's many different stories that come along with what we should do. I am concerned about what the present danger is of Santa Susana, but I'm also very concerned about what will, what will happen if we end up digging up those areas and bringing it, chucking it down into our communities. We really have to pay attention to risk assessment, right? What's the risk for the greater community? Maybe we need to take a look at a, let the scientists and let those that are studying this issue make the decisions, but make the, make the decisions that are best to clean it up with EPA standards.
Thank you, and our final question is granted now by Raj Singh.
Let me first of all, let me first of all chip in, dividing the previous question of the...
Try to keep the answer respectful, is that the question?
I'm very concerned, like, nothing has happened in the last four or five years, so that means we have to end what is not working right now. So I personally believe, I don't believe in the government solutions, I believe in the private solutions. I think we should have an independent group appointed with the private funds to go and do what best we can do to make this area and environment better.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next round of questions. This is on budget and finance. These are 30 seconds. Do you want to take a note? 30 seconds. First question, the city laid out roughly 5,000 workers during the recession. Many of those jobs have been left unfilled, and city services have been cut to many communities across LA, particularly in low-income communities. How would you create the funding necessary to restore city services and putting Angelino's back to work? First question goes to Joshua Gager.
Well, thank you very much. We have to look at new sources of revenue. I'm not talking about new taxes, I'm talking about the cannabis industry that we have quite watched here in the city. We have a terrible rollout of the fruit phases. We're looking at, you know, tens of millions of dollars we can pump back into our city budget, and we can look at being more efficient. We have $200 million outsourced in terms of legal fees from the city attorney's office. We need to have the city attorney start using its attorneys within the city department and start, not necessarily settling cases, but fighting for them, and start to be more efficient with our funds.
Thank you. That's time. Carlos Amador.
Thank you. I think one of the things that we, after this sober look, is the amount of money that it takes the LFR Department and LAPD, especially in regards to the pensions. I am in strong support to end the drop program, to make sure that we invest back into their communities, instead of this, this program that has costed the city residents $1.6 billion since it was in state.
All right, next question, this is Stace with Frank Barry.
I'm proud to have, for 16 years, served as the budget chair for our city, and for 16 years, we were in the black, and we had anywhere between 15, 18% reserves. You don't spend more money than you have in good times, because when bad times have come, you'll be able to react to them and be able to adjust to your situation. But if you overspend in good times, you're not going to have any reserves, and you're not going to have the budget, general budget money, in order to keep workers employed.
Still question on restoring city services to Lorraine Moni.
Thank you. So the Fix LA effort is a movement of groups, dozens of unions and community groups and advocates across the city who called on the mayor to restore these city services, to hire back these 5,000 city workers, and the mayor actually promised to hire back these workers by 2018, and we are here in 2019, and we've hired less than 1,000 of those workers back. And not only that, the Fix LA effort identified some key sources of revenue that could be used.
Thank you. Next question, the next group, 52% of the city's budget is currently allocated to LAPD. While some of the greatest crises facing LA are homelessness, housing affordability, and environmental degradation, knowing this, would you continue the current allotment to LAPD or favor reallocation of funds? Stella Malloy.
Stella Malloy. This is a very complicated question. We need funding for LAPD to protect our communities, but we absolutely have a major crisis in our district, which is not unique within the wider city, and that's homelessness. I do feel we're at a crisis mode, and we do need to look into reallocating some funds to address the crisis in the short and the long term. Thank you.
Jeff Dar, reallocating LAPD funds.
First, very important that we make sure we have adequate funds for public safety. Second, in supply areas we've talked about so far in the budget, a moment... and both were a particular question. We need to make our city more bureaucratically and culturally sound so we're more efficient with what we have and what we do. And we shouldn't be having, for example, our police spending a huge amount of disproportionate time addressing homelessness. That's not the job of the police. So we need to sit here and not only, really not a real reallocation, it's a question of being more efficient and making sure we free up the police so that they're protecting the homeless instead of us.
Thank you. Sean Denzey.
Every day I go into work, I am an LAPD officer. I am not a police officer, I feel like I'm a social worker. Unfortunately, because of the homeless issue, this is a crisis that we're in the midst of. The problem is, is Los Angeles police officers are probably the only ones that have the tools to deal with it, especially when persons become irrational or erratic because of societal behavior. We have to do everything in our means to protect our community, but we do need to support our LAPD, we need to support our public safety.
Thank you. Brandon Sario, same question, LAPD allocation budget.
I would never cut the budget for the LAPD. Devonshire Division is the best police force in all of Los Angeles. We have the highest volunteer police force in all of Los Angeles. Politicians have failed us. And they failed us on a number of cases on a state level and on the local level. Prop 47, Prop 57, AB 109. We are handcuffing our police department to sell out to special interests and other people that are making money off of this.
Thank you. This is the next question for this next group. While public opinion polling shows strong backing for a parcel tax to undermine better services for LAUSD students, Chamber of Commerce and other major business groups now oppose it as a waste of money. What are your views on Measure EE to impose a tax on buildings, it's a parcel tax, to add funds for local schools? J.D. Moore.
I think that before we vote to tax the public, LAUSD has to get its house in order. Okay? That's the first thing. And if you look at some of the statistics with regards to this, at the same time, the student enrollment went down by 10% because people are fleeing our schools, the students are fleeing our schools. And teachers went down 6%, but the support staff went up 26% and other administration went up 16%, okay? So this is the problem, it's not a funding problem, it's an allocation problem. It's not getting to our students.
That's time, thank you. A supporter of feelings about Measure EE, Alkash Singh.
I'm going to separate the teachers from the teachers' union, LAUSD. Our teachers are great. I think they are doing the best job under the circumstances they're put in. The schools are, parents are not sending their children properly trained to be educated. It is the job of the parents. As far as the management is concerned, management has to learn to manage and take less money, spend less money, they are spending more and they keep on asking more. Now they want to raise our taxes, parcel tax. I think all of us here should make sure we read that measure completely before we decide on voting for them.
That's time.
Thank you.
Scotty, who's final?
Yeah, this last winter, we saw a great rising of teachers, parents and students who went to march for better education. And now we have to finish that process, and that's why I support Measure EE. It's what our superintendent, our mayor, our school board, our teachers, they all want this because we know we need smaller classes, we need more arts teachers, we need more music teachers. And so it's not enough to just march like I did with UTLA and with our teachers locally. We have to fund the classroom improvements that they need. And I do this in the name of my mother, who's sitting there, who used to teach at Lawrence Street Elementary in Northridge, and I know the importance of education in our community.
All right, this is going to be our next round, round four. These are 60-second answers again. This is about affordable housing and homelessness. First group will get this question. What do you feel are the top priorities the city of Los Angeles must pursue to address the homelessness and affordable housing crisis? Sean Denzey.
I believe that we have to look at the direction we're going for purposes of housing first. I believe, and actually it was quoted today, or actually on the news, by Reverend Andy Bale, that works for the Union Rescue Mission, or the head of the Union Rescue Mission, that this is a mental health crisis that we're in. We have to address mental health first. We have to address the irrational behaviors being caused by persons that are addicted to drugs and mentally ill. I'd also like to consider part of the model for Los Angeles Family Housing, Los Angeles Homeless Service Agency, is heart reduction, protecting a person's right to use drugs, not discriminating against that person. I would say take that part of the model out and bring in the mental health portion. So if we can stabilize a person's behaviors, then maybe we can get them into housing and support them.
Great, that's your time. Lorraine Longquist, housing and homelessness.
Thank you. The voters voted to allocate money to tax ourselves to place supportive housing all over the city. And what's happened right now is that we in Council District 12 are not spending that money because we do not have any supportive housing here in our district. We do not have any bridge housing here in our district. And it's time that we in Council District 12 make sure that we create these solutions in here, in our district, that we bring people off of the streets and give them the support they need. It's actually cheaper to house people first than for people to be on the streets. Right now, we are spending about $140 to $160 per day. Taxpayers are spending that for people to be on the streets. That's how much it costs for all the emergency room visits and the interactions with the police department. It's actually literally cheaper to bring people into a home, to give them the services they need, drug addiction counseling and mental health services, like career counseling, et cetera.
Carlos Amador, this is homelessness, affordable housing crisis.
Thank you. I myself am a social worker. I was a student, as a social worker from UCLA. My wife is a social worker as well. I think when I hear that police officers are doing social workers' job, I think we're doing something wrong. We need to invest on ensuring that the community members who are experiencing homelessness are receiving the mental health and healthcare services that they need to be able to support themselves and get back on their feet. We need to make sure that we're building the 222 supporting housing units that the city plays, or each district plays as well, to make sure that they're being housed and thinking of ways that we can create more permanent housing for our community members who are experiencing homelessness. One thing that I think is inspiring to see what happened in West LA, council member Bonn worked with the VA campus there to create housing for homelessness, for individuals facing homelessness. I want to be able to work with the VA campus in North Hills to be able to open up the opportunities for more community members to be able to be housed. No one should be able to be left on the streets.
That's time. Brandon Sario, last one this round.
Yeah, hi, Brandon Sario. Years ago, there was something called the Jones lawsuit, the Jones settlement, the Jones agreement. Basically, it said that, a judge said that, we need to build 1,250 more beds or more units to house the people who are homeless in Los Angeles. And we fulfilled that agreement. Now, Mayor Garsetti has said unless you build bridge housing in your district, he will not enforce that settlement that we have already agreed to and settled. I think that's unacceptable. I will not have my district held hostage to Mayor Garsetti for political reasons. There's about 55,000 people homeless in Los Angeles. 16,000 roughly have mental illness. Our money should go to hospitals to treat people that can't take care of themselves. I have a guy, I have a man, I pray for him every day. He's living on Devonshire and Sepulveda, and I've seen him for years, for years, and he needs help, and we need more policies to get him help. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the next question. What measures should be taken to create an appropriate economic mix in new housing development? Please indicate what income levels should be considered low income for low-income set aside units?
I'm not an expert in what income levels should be, should be the specific levels. Those are best for the experts to decide. But the fact of the matter is that we have a problem right now because we are not protecting our single-family neighborhoods and we have developers who are simply out to make a lot of money and they are building housing, which is luxury housing, and that's not helping people who have an economic problem. So what we need to do is when we do build, we need to build in appropriate areas and we need to make sure that there's a proper mix of housing and not when the city council, when city council members rezone a piece of property as a giveaway to developers so they can make tons and tons of money by building luxury housing and then in a lot of times they're destroying housing which is already affordable. And this is what's going on, and this is unconscionable. And we have to stop it, and we have to stop it now.
Just to give a quick clarification, what do you consider low income? That was a question.
What I'm saying is, I'm not an expert on what is low income. So I leave that, I don't answer questions when I don't have the, I'm sorry. I don't make up answers to questions when I'm not an expert. So I will leave that to the experts, but we can certainly have that conversation.
Now, Raj Singh, same question.
We have, we are going to have a major problem in the district because a lot of talent cannot afford housing. We are leaving the district because housing is so expensive. We not only need low-income housing, we need middle-income housing, and we need the housing for our people who don't have, who are staying on the roadside, the homeless. I have a suggestion. There are a lot of people in our district who have tons of money, tons of money. They are willing to spend the money. Let the private people construct those housing, especially for the homeless. We can do it, I can do it, we can collect a lot of money, not only from the district, beyond the district. And right next to that housing, we will also construct Sikh temples so that people who are hungry, they can feed themselves with food. Sikhs are experts in feeding people. I want everybody in the district to be fed and never be hungry. Whenever I build housing, as a city council member...
That's your time, sir.
I will make sure, there's a Sikh temple next to it. Thank you.
Frank Barry, same question on new housing development. What should be considered low income or low-income set aside units?
You know, your question actually defines the very problem in that the definition of affordable must be looked at and changed. You know, the county said $54,000 allows you to be eligible for low income, but the reality, we know, $54,000 after taxes is kind of affordable. And then affordable for a senior citizen, affordable for a single mom with kids. Homeless people, they don't have a job, so what's affordable for that? You're looking at really some type of transition, getting them back into a job and getting them back into some type of housing. So what you're saying regarding the definition, you've nailed it on the head. And I can't tell you if it's $36,000 or $48,000, I think that's what you're looking for. Because the reality is, it gets more and more expensive whatever housing you have. I think the key is to define what's affordable senior housing versus affordable homeless housing versus affordable someone that's just lost their job and on the cusp of homelessness who we can help to.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. And for the record, these questions are submitted by the response. Just to be responsive. Joshua Ganger, you have this also, what's considered low income for low-income set aside units?
Thank you. As I have been on the way in this community out of Chatsworth, where I'm resident now for a decade, I have worked with community members and with my neighbors on approving or supporting development projects in our community that have supported low or true low income. There is, they need, and we all recognize that, but it is about balance. We need to find where it's appropriate to build these kinds of developments. I think an exact measure, since I will offer you an actual plan, having a waiver program with developers in the city to incentivize them to build, not just in the 12th district, but throughout the city, these portable housing units would incent, you would see more of this development like the rest of my opponents here. I don't know the exact answer, but I would say somewhere if you're making low income wage, you would definitely qualify for true low, low income housing. $35,000 a year would probably fit the bill as well if you're leading the city.
Thank you. Next question. Affordable rentals are vanishing in Los Angeles due to rent hikes, counterreductions, Airbnb expansion, et cetera. What would you do to protect or provide an adequate mix of units in existing housing for renters of all income levels? Jeff Darb.
This is 60 seconds.
This is a 60-second question.
Okay, thank you. First of all, 60% of our city is renters. Less so in this district, but citywide, big issue. So right now, there are a lot of things that we can be doing that we're not doing. By background, I was on the city's commission that made portable housing for 13 years and chaired for 10 years. We can sit here and make sure that we're not losing people to homelessness by protecting them from being evicted. We can expand existing laws, we need to do that. Second, we need to make sure that when people in this district rent an apartment with a parking space, as a commissioner, I was able to put a price on that if someone took that away. And I couldn't sit here and say, you can't just take away the parking space. People need to have a place to put their cars because they need to be able to get to work. And that's another step keeping people from off the streets. We also need to sit here and do what San Francisco, for example, is doing. If tenants are displaced, they should get first in line priority for the affordable housing that we need to build, which I haven't had a chance to address yet. But we need to make sure that we protect people so that not only are they housed, but if they lose their housing, which is what's happening more and more in the city, they have a place to go versus becoming homeless. Thank you.
Stella Malloy.
I am for rent control. I am for strict regulation for Airbnb. Folks are allowed to rent out their spaces as long as they follow the same rules as other folks. I was appointed a commissioner at the Tourism Board of Los Angeles by Mayor Garsetti for many years. And this issue directly impacted the numbers for renters and how it created a chaos in the city of Los Angeles. I feel that we cannot displace rental community unless we give them an opportunity to move to some other space and to protect a roof over their head. Thank you.
And finally, Scotty, first.
So there's a few things. First of all, you know, I work in the federal government office and I see people all the time who come to us who are struggling to get by. And they've applied for Section 8 vouchers. These are vouchers to help those who need a little leg up to get that unit that they can afford. And increasingly in our city, there's discrimination against those people where people cannot use those vouchers to pay for the apartment. It's funds that are available there and the landlord could accept them, but they choose not to. So we need to strengthen those protections, absolutely, because there's not just tens of thousands of people waiting for Section 8 vouchers. There's over 100,000 in LA County. These are people who need that assistance and the federal government's put that money aside for them. The answer to this problem really comes down to housing. We need more housing. We need housing that is available, that fits the affordable definition that we were talking about earlier. Sometimes up to 20% of a new development can be set aside for affordable housing and we absolutely need to do that. We need to empower people to put accessory dwelling units on their property. You want to put an in-law suite in your back part of your property? You have the land to do it? Let's hope you do it.
That is your time. Now we're going to the lightning round. And if you want, if you just take a quick seventh inning spread, if you want to stand up for a second, this is going to be yes/no answers. We're going to go up and down the row. I'll ask the question, I'll answer any of the yes or no questions. Then at the back, we will have the audience round with the 30-second answers once again.
Questions for the candidates, we can take them here.